We're ready to go? Do you know if neither one's coming?
No, they'll be out today.
There we go. Good evening. I'd like to thank everybody for coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission of Homewood for Thursday, April 13th. We only have a couple items to cover tonight. First thing I have to do is call roll.
Member Alfonso. Captain, Member Bransky.
Here.
Member Cap. Captain. Member O'Brien.
Here.
Member Johnson.
Here.
Member Castaneda.
Here.
Chairman Delevay.
Here. Okay, the next thing we have to do is approve our minutes from our last meeting on...
Hartshife.
Hartshife, thank you. Does anybody have any corrections for the minutes from our last meeting?
Maybe come at page two. I take that back. It's the page three in the very corner.
Which corner?
The right-hand corner. It says two of six, but disregard that. I'm looking for...
Oh, you want page... okay, that one.
Page three in the very corner. In the middle of the page, the last part of a sentence. "Mrs. Wang has taken the measurements shown on the floor plan and explained that the difference between these numbers could be human error in measuring and the difference between net leaseable or gross floor area calculations." The difference between the 1280 and 1120 was 160, which is why I brought it up at the meeting, because that's 160 square feet, which is a treatment room, which spoke to Commissioner Bransky's question later on in that meeting as to how many employees there would be. Perhaps they made an error at the time in the count of their treatment rooms. Apart from that, the commission, correct me if I'm wrong, does not get involved in leaseable measurements or net measurements. We deal in factual measurements, area, distance, et cetera. The human error, in today, we have had CAD presentations that are incorrect, and the greatest error there was 42,000 square feet on the jewel renovation. So, that's just a comment I'm making, not a correction. I don't know why net leaseable or gross floor is in there, or human error.
Well, there's a difference between the two.
Yes, yes. Of course, we shouldn't get involved in leaseable dimensions at all, as far as I know. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, there are all factual types of measurements when it comes to how it uses John up. I think what the minutes are capturing is an explanation of why the measurements that we presented might have been different. And I think one of the challenges that happens is with small business owners going into an existing space, they might not have CAD drawings or an architect coming out and field measuring and accounting for the difference of, like, those thickness of walls. So, A, that's where we get some of that human error coming in.
That is a possibility, but 99.9% we receive here, straight measurements.
Right, right. So, I think you have referenced, like, knowing what the amount was.
Okay.
Quick question, not to dive in the weeds, but to that point, a lot of times in these minutes, we strive for accuracy with measurements, and to Member Bransky's credit, does an extraordinary job of parsing out where we might have some errors. My question is, how critical is that accuracy in the minutes versus other documents that would more be the legal record of what's being allowed? I mean, wouldn't like a business license or something else kind of more be the legal record? How much accuracy do we need to get in what we do versus the paperwork that's going to support the ultimate decision?
Yeah, the margins definitely have to be accurate. But I think the reason for accuracy in minutes is because it's a story record. You know, we use it all the time to go back and say, I think this decision was actually approved, so it's a one of these days.
So, we do want it to stand on some of those accuracy, okay?
Well...
And I wasn't trying to discount what Member Bransky was doing. I just, if there was other documents in the process that were more critical.
Well, but that goes back to what we just addressed at the last meeting, and that is, the record is the record. It's recorded, it's there. You're absolutely right, you know, and that's why I favor the summary as opposed to the specific. So, we wouldn't, and I'm not pointing to this instance, but just as a general matter, that it's better to be able to point to that official, that complete record of the conversations, and let's keep this, keep these, you know, we agreed last month this, how we were going to record minutes of meetings.
Yeah, and not verbatim.
Right, exactly. So, that's, yeah. So, I think that'll be taken.
Speaking of the Records Act, so that we don't have a loose ends situation in the future, Commissioner Cap asked about the Records Act, and staff offered to look into it, how long the recordings are kept. So, is there an answer to that, or? That'll be next meeting or two?
All right, anybody else?
Yes, sir.
No other questions?
No.
Okay, good. I will then entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting.
Still move. Now, second.
Member Bransky.
Yes.
Member O'Brien.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Abstain.
Chairman Delevay.
Yes. All right, next case is case number 23-08, a special use permit for a salon at 18668 Dixie Highway. Request is from D. Shola Spencer. We have a legal notice that was published in the March 28th edition of the South Town. We have a letter from the property owner, and we have a diagram of the space, and we have the petitioner. And if you'd like to come up to the podium, we're going to swear you in, and I think you remember how this was done. If you state your name and address for the record, please.
D. Shola Spencer, 2031 Colette Lane, Flossmore, Illinois.
And you swear the testimony is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, not a begot?
Yes, I will.
Okay. One question I have. Did you have a diagram with any dimensions on it? I don't have one here.
Did I not put that in the...
Okay, if you want to go ahead and present your case.
Oh, okay. You know what? I just kind of redid what I did the first time, because I was, it's like all the same spaces, right, in that, you know, that thing. And so, I just kind of resubmitted what I had, because it was literally two doors down.
Do you know approximately how big that space is?
It's the same, same square feet, 540 square feet.
Okay.
Actually, in the memo, Valerie stated that it was slightly bigger, 560.
Okay, sorry about that.
That was the previous one.
The previous one was 560.
Okay.
Have we heard back from any of the property owners, by the way?
I did not hear from anyone.
No, okay. Okay, so tell us what you want to do there, please.
Okay. I am a specialist in dreadlocks. Would you like for me to get my PowerPoint again to do the whole thing?
No.
What changed your situation?
Oh, no. What happened was, when I met with the landlord, got the keys, I started bringing in, you know, like, people to give me quotes, contractors for quotes, and the plumbing there will not, the cost was, it started off at $8,000, and then they did not know, based on the, there was a dentist's office there back in the 1940s, so there are these pipes that, they're cut off, they're cut off and everything. They were under the ground when Ms. Maureen was there, but had they gone in there and those pipes crossed over what they needed, then they don't know the history of that as to whether they would have to cut those, and it just started turning into cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. So, as a result, I called the landlord and asked him whether the space that was two doors over was available, because it was available, you know, when I initially applied, but he had not yet gotten all the things cleaned out of it from the rage room. They left, I'll use plethora of things in there. It was ridiculous, and so, he just so happened had gotten it cleaned out, but I'd already come for my initial zoning, so I just called him and asked him, was it available, and just so happened, the person who was going to lease it, who had applied, they didn't meet the credit standard, so, there you go.
Okay.
So, and then, so what I, he did was, he overnighted the keys to me, so that I can get a plumber to look at it to see whether that was going to work, and here I am again.
Okay. So, just to refresh our memory, you're going to do what?
I am a specialist of dreadlocks, like with my hair, but, you know, there are a variety of different types of dreadlocks, as I taught you before. Yeah, so, I had to, like, do the whole thing to move to the...
And how many customers will you have at one time?
One. There may be a layover of two if someone is under the dryer and I'm starting on a shampoo for another person. It's just myself in there, just to remind you.
And your hours of operation are going to be what?
Well, just to remind, I'm a college professor, so it just, mainly the weekends, but I would say, like, 9:00 AM until probably like 7:00. I take my last client at about 5:30. I'm not, I'm not a young chicken anymore, and I don't sit in the shop all day. I go get my money and leave.
Okay, so Monday through Friday, 9 to 7, or?
No, I don't work on Mondays. It'll be like Tuesday through Saturday, if that's the case, but normally, I'm only working Thursday, Friday, Saturday, if Thursday, because I teach college.
Right. So, Tuesday through...
Tuesday through Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah.
And what hours again?
Approximately like 9 to 7.
9 to 7, okay. And no Sundays?
Not on purpose.
Okay.
That's like a serious emergency, you know. That's one head, you know, that's a serious emergency.
And do you take walk-ins or the all appointments?
No, I don't have the bandwidth to, my clientele is all off of referrals.
All right, let me open it up to the board, see if they have any questions. Is Castaneda, no?
Questions?
No. O'Brien?
I always have a question.
I'd be disappointed if you didn't.
The owner of the building, it was indicated there's a letter in here from the owner. There is a letter in here from an individual with no title. However, on the application, there is an owner similar, or same last name.
Did you get this?
Who's identified as the owner. Yeah, no title. Doesn't indicate owner.
Right, okay.
But on the application, non-residential zoning, property owner named Paul Henke, H-E-N-K-E. So, is that different than the letter that we received? I'm asking this for clarification. There's an Emma Henke. Is that a daughter, a wife?
That's his wife.
They both own the building together through EMA Building Corporation.
Okay, so for the record, we're going to pick Paul Henke, who's identified on the form as the owner?
Yes.
Oh, we could put Emma in.
The owner is the corporation.
Yeah.
EMA Building Corporation.
EMA Building Corporation is the owner.
Which is on the letter and the application, both.
Okay, okay. I have a question on numbers. The numbers on page nine. "The shopping center occupies two lots held in common ownership. The total's approximately 12,500 gross square feet, allowing 42 parking spaces." But page 11 indicates 65,330 square feet and only 40 parking spaces. Is there something I can't see there?
65,330 is the lot size, not the building size.
Is the lot size not the what?
Not the building size. So, 12,500 is the size of the building, 65,330 is the size of the property line.
Okay, then, indicate, the, page nine indicates, to me, the way I read it, it occupies two lots held in common ownership. The total's approximately 12,500 gross square feet. It doesn't say anything about a building. So, the logical question I have is, when I go over to page 11, it says lot size.
Do you want to look at page 18?
That's where page nine says the property kind of shopping center, which occupies two lots in common ownership total. So, there can that total refer to that one whole kind of shopping center, which would be the building.
Page 18.
Well, page nine is the first one, yeah, it's total approximately.
Yeah, so I was just going to point out, the two, the two lots, the pink boundaries comprise the, number of the lot area, and then just the building itself is the 12,500.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that perfectly clear, but it's not clear on materials we receive.
Okay.
The 12,500 is not identified as the building. It's identified as the two lots.
Okay, I will be more clear in the future.
And how about the parking?
My count is that there's 42 parking spaces. The applicant put 40 on hers. I don't know that she counted it the same as I did. So, either, then that's what, oh, oh, you said that there's 40 provided on site. I'm not sure how she came up with that number. My calculations show that there are 54 parking spaces, and by mathematically, we require 42.
Then we'll go with the 42.
Yes.
Last question I have is on findings of fact. Number three, the proposed business will not have a negative impact on other surrounding businesses or properties. That's not a fact, it's an opinion. It should be removed. No other comments?
I think that's one of the questions on the application.
That's actually covered in the standards.
Right. Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Bransky?
No, no questions.
Okay. And I have none, since we've done this once before. So, are we ready to make a motion for case number 23-08? For permit for a salon at 18668 Dixie Highway?
Chairman, I'll make that motion. Make motion, recommend approval of case 23-08, grant a special use permit for a salon establishment in the B3 general business district for the Natural U LLC at 18668 Dixie Highway, incorporating the findings of fact into the record as amended, committing finding of fact number three. That's it?
Okay. We have motion by Member Bransky. Do we have a second?
Oh, sir.
Second by Member O'Brien. Roll call?
Member Bransky.
Yes.
Member O'Brien.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Member Castaneda.
Yes.
Chairman Delevay.
Yes. Well, thank you all again, and I hope to not have to pay this fee and come back.
Good luck again.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck.
You're making success, so let us know how you're doing.
Just stop by whenever you want. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
You too, good day.
Always a little bit different.
Yeah, it looks different.
Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a public hearing for case number 2323, tax amendment to basketball equipment in sports courts. Then we have a application from the Village of Homewood. So, who's going to represent the Village of Homewood?
We discussed this...
Let me back up for a minute. This was also published in the Tuesday, March 28th edition of the South Town.
And it's, it's, Mr. Chair, it's case 2313.
I'm sorry, what?
It's case 2313-13, you said, number three.
It's, yeah, it's 2313.
Yeah, this one's 2313. I know, I gotta look and see what's on my thing.
This is a, this is a follow-up to our discussion on March 9th, when we discussed the matter of the permanent basketball poles and basketball courts and other sports courts. So, this is an application to codify that, to take this to the, to the board, to change, to actually change the code, and we would change table 440303, permanent encroachments in required yards, and remove the requirement for basketball equipment to be located 10 feet from the front lot line, and replace tennis courts with sports courts. That way, then all basketball courts would also have to meet the requirements. And then we would other, we would also add a definition for basketball equipment and a definition for sports courts, just to clarify the code.
And sports courts would be at least 10 feet from the...
Yes. Would meet the same standards that applies currently only to tennis courts. We would include all sports courts. And they would only be permitted in the rear yard.
Anybody have any questions about that?
I do.
Yes, sir.
So, just to clarify, and I think I go throw a wrench in the gears, is what I'm going to do. When we talked about it last time, I was under the understanding, we were talking about all basketball courts on the front of the house driveway, and saying that they had to be more than 10 feet from the lot line.
Yes.
So, when I was reading through this, we've got the definition, is talking about those mounted on poles, because I was asking the question about, well, what about, what about backboards that are mounted over your garage, whatever?
That is a good catch. But, yeah, I had that same question during me sort of writing this. Discussion that happened previously said we were talking specifically about old mounted ones, so the question of one mounted on the garage are still out there.
Good, because I, either I didn't hear that, or I didn't understand the difference, that you were making a distinction between the two. Because now that I read this, I understand the reasoning, I would think the reasoning between the, for the 10 feet away from the lot line is, you don't want a permanently mounted pole sitting right next to a sidewalk or whatever, and that, A, makes it more likely that if somebody's coming down the walk, they're going to get, you know, pushed by some kid playing, whereas if they're further up the drive, it's less likely to happen, and if the pole is further up the drive, it's less likely that the ball's going to get to the street, and thus having a kid chasing the ball in the street.
So, they want to put that 10 feet.
So, I'm starting to think that if we're talking about pole mounted, it makes sense. Yes, we should be 10 feet up from the lot line. If it's house or garage mounted, that's where my concern was, because I didn't want to eliminate some people's ability to have that basketball court.
Yeah, but you can't have your cake and eat it too, right?
Well...
If your concern is health, safety, and welfare.
Yeah.
And if my house happens to be...
But whose house is 10 feet from the lot line?
Well, let's say my apartment.
Shouldn't be anybody's, so...
I know, but what if my apartment's a few feet away, and I get to put a basketball court up there and have the ball, you know, hit the street?
Some houses may be that close if you're in certain districts.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, depending on the width of your house.
Probably pretty rare, but...
Do people mount basketball hoops on their house?
In the front garage.
The garage.
But isn't all, pretty much all garages are more than, those are set further back?
Not that, as we'll touch on in the next case, not that everything is built to what our current standards are, but the window on setback even for R2 of 25 feet.
It is, but there...
So, to be only 10 feet from the lot line would be...
Highly usual.
Yeah, not, not that it couldn't happen, but that would be different.
I would think it could happen in the case of a corner lot more often.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, that's a really good point, yeah. Like, it's all that exterior side, not the front.
But this just says, oh, yeah, that's true.
So, the likelihood of a structure-mounted basketball backboard violating the 10-foot is probably not going to happen, so it should be okay.
Should be.
Yeah, and if it wasn't, I still would vote the same way, then. You just don't get one, right? I mean, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Or you apply for a variance.
Right.
So, so what we're voting on tonight removes the 10-foot from lot line condition. So, we're going, the way we're going to have it is, I can put a pole-mounted hoop 2 feet from my lot line.
Wherever you want.
So, right now, right up to that sidewalk even.
If you remove that, yes.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm saying, I'm going to throw a wrench in the gears, I'm walking back my concern about that.
Okay, we can put that back in?
Yeah, or if you want to touch the difference, you can buy it, or whatever you want.
Well, I think the 10 is, when you look at it that way, I think the 10 is appropriate.
Okay, we can add more.
I advocated against it, but I see the light.
It was 5 foot originally.
From the front or from the side? I think it was only 5 from the side, wasn't it?
And it was 10 feet from the front.
Changed to 10 feet.
Okay, so we're not going to remove the requirement?
Well, it depends on how, what everybody else thinks about it.
Right.
I'm just changing my position on it, because I was the big one advocating to, to remove. Because I was the big one advocating to, to remove.
Member O'Brien, what are your thoughts?
There was no mention of two hoops in the front yard. There was a question on page five back in the minutes. Member O'Brien told several questions for discussion. Will one hoop or two be allowed in the front yard?
So now, now's your choice to pick.
You want to limit it?
I personally don't care, but I, I'm just posing the question. If we allow two in the backyard, whether they are mobile, whether they're affixed to a garage, or whether they're like my neighbor that has a full concrete court and two fixed permanent hoops, are we also going to allow two hoops in the front? Because some of the people, for example, on my block, they'll park eight cars on their driveway.
Yes, but you're not gonna have any car traffic or pedestrian traffic if you've got your hoops in the backyard.
No. But if somebody wants to put two in the front.
Then they could use it.
Is that allowable?
Well, we might wanna limit that, because if you put two in the front, you can use it effectively because it has a court.
Yeah. And one on each side is a driveway. Mobile. Mobile.
Yes, then you could use it as a court.
I think, um, last meeting, we talked about defining the basketball equipment that we, that you all wanted to regulate as the pole-mounted permanent ones, that the backboards mounted to the garage and mobile ones were less of a concern. So I just wanna break that up, because now I'm picturing what you're saying, thinking you could have either a pole-mounted one or one upon a garage, and then you could even wheel out your mobile one and put it at the other end of the driveway the long way, but that's not what we were defining in here as the permanent pole-mounted ones, so just something to think about as we.
Well, I'm just addressing member Bransky's concern about the safety and.
Yeah.
People running across the sidewalk and wherever pedestrians trying to walk down. Should we have two in front as opposed to just one? Well, it's, it's a more, it's a deeper question than that, because it's like, okay, well, when you say two in the front, are you assuming that they're, how are they, in, in relation to the house? I have a hint of that. I'm just thinking of the activity associated with two in the front.
Right.
As opposed to just one.
You're gonna have errant basketballs with one, too. The risk is there for either one or two.
But one, can, can I assume that one of those baskets is going to might violate the ten, the footage lot requirement?
Not fair.
If you do two?
From each other.
Well, that's the, that's the question, okay. How, how do you, how do you do a basketball court in the front yard unless it's regular? If you've got a double-wide driveway and you've got one of those lower extensions on the side, I suppose you could get a. But that's a sports court. Then, then you're, yeah, then you got a driveway slash sports court.
No, that's, we're pointing out, the definition, I did say a driveway or property tag shall not be considered a sports court.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So if we take that sentence out, could we then call it a sports court?
No, but I don't want, we don't want it to be a, we don't want it to be a sports court. We want sports courts to be in the backyard.
Only, only in the backyard.
We just eliminate it and allow one basket in the front.
I think that's straightforward.
That's more straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Very simple.
Yeah, limit it to one.
So then I think I'll make that change in the table, basketball equipment at least five feet between your side lot line, maximum of one in the front yard after you do the proposal.
So we want five feet or ten feet from the lot line?
Five feet.
Five feet from the interior side?
On the side, and then the question is on the table, do we want the restrictions from the front lot line being stated?
My next question is regarding lights. There's no mention of lights in the ordinance, and I understand that, Angela, your comments regarding lights, cutoff fixtures that have to be, that are an outside lighting, but that's not associated with basketball or tennis or any other activities that might be done outside.
There's a maximum pole-mounted light height on, for residential, our, our, I believe that's to be, it should be ample enough, so that maybe.
I understand, but where is it? Where is that?
That could be anywhere.
No intention.
Yeah, but there's.
Or where is the no?
Yeah, there is something in the code that addresses that, that didn't need to be changed.
I'm glad.
Yeah, so let's find that. I'm trying to see.
Well, again, do you remember Johnson's comment, a little deeper? This ordinance that we have has been commented about as not being friendly, because when you go to something like this, someone goes, not familiar with the ordinance, and they go to look up basketball and everything associated with basketball, they may not be thinking of the light or whatever.
So it's.
And so therefore, in one section of the ordinance.
Forty-four oh-five.
Are not the elements, all of the elements, that they have to consider in coming forward with an application or doing construction or whatever.
So we could restate it.
You have to look around in three or four different sections of the code to pull it together.
We could restate, so that section forty-four oh-five twelve A is the section that requires all outdoor lighting be full cutoff fixtures, so that you can't have that. We could somehow restate that if you wanna have it.
What page is that on?
That's.
It's not on there.
This is in the binder.
That's in the, that's in the code.
Right. Oh, do you, you don't know what page it's on though in the binder?
Um, it is on, which, which type of page number do you want?
There are two different pages.
Article five, page forty-four.
In the whole code, it's ninety-four, page ninety-four.
Page forty-four?
Ninety-four.
Oh, ninety-four, sorry. Ninety-four of a hundred and fifty-four?
Yes.
Correct.
So I, I do agree that if you're, that you do have to search through two different sections, and that might be onerous.
Yeah, it's a screen.
I don't know if we could add something to the, specifically for the equipment.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Trying to keep it simpler.
But I think if you open that gate, then I'm also going to be pointing you towards your lot coverage and all the other requirements. And I think that's what we play in the office and help people when they create a third class and say, okay, these regulations you need to know about, which might not all be fully included, because they serve a multitude of requests.
Yeah, it's, it's neater and simpler keeping it under lighting that way.
Right, because, right.
You don't have to, you don't miss something. The more times you put it in the code, the.
Yeah, if you ever go to make a revision, you gotta go find all those places to revise it.
Yeah, you might miss it.
Something we do have in the office, are these like cheat sheets for someone who comes in? We, um, some updated upper-like fences, some swimming pools and everything, that's saying, these are the different places of regulations that you need to consider. Um, and we could maybe one of those related to basketball hoops and sports courts that cover all of these things, you know, have to be under your lot coverage, these are restrictions on lighting, this is where it can be looked at, like, even if that's an effort that you afford, that we buy it for.
Is it as simple as putting in a reference on one of the tables?
That's a good question, actually. Then I wonder where you would put that, though.
Yeah, but then are you gonna do that for the other type of consideration, from other.
No.
Types of structures or things you might do to your property? How many references are you gonna end up having?
Yeah.
Put a table for referencing.
All in one spot, that would sure make it much easier.
I, 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 I go with what, the fact that you have a professional staff that can walk them through the process of this, which should take care of the, making it simple for the project. But if, yeah, if, I could certainly see someone coming in and saying, well, wait a minute, why do you do this for? You make this exception with lighting for basketball, then over here, we have something else, you're, you're, with a different requirement.
You're gonna miss it.
And then you're gonna have a problem with that, so. Oh, I'm not suggesting a different requirement for basketball. The only other question I have regarding the lighting is time limits. It was listed over here, but it's not in the ordinance. In other words, the impact on the neighbors.
The noise.
You can allow lighting until eight, nine o'clock at night. They're playing out there. There were six guys the other night playing about eight or nine o'clock at night.
Yeah.
Boom, 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 boom.
There's a noise requirement?
So, you know, it's just a question. I mean, it was in the minutes, but it's not carried over into the ordinance.
Yeah, um, I think that activity would have to comply with the newest ordinance of the municipal code, which cover noise and.
Well, this actually.
Possibly like lighting, but I'm not sure.
House, under number five, household recreational facilities, it does say, any noise generated by the activity shall comply with the regulations of the ordinance. So they, they're not technically allowed to generate noise, so you could call it in as an ordinance violation. How they would calculate that, I, you know, that's the question.
Well, for our direction in completion here, do we wanna say no lights allowed? And therefore, sundown is the end of the game? Or do we wanna put in a time? I don't care, I just want to complete this particular amendment correctly.
So is it the noise or the light at night that is bothersome?
It could be both.
Probably, yeah. It's probably both, right?
Isn't something you set in the zoning ordinance would not be on a?
Well, this references to the code of ordinances, which is where noise regulations are.
More, more, right.
That's for noise.
That, that's for noise, it's just stay in there.
Yeah.
Because you, yeah, yeah, but it's a problem, because I've seen.
It is.
They'll play till eleven o'clock at night.
Yeah.
And with lights on.
And it's very loud.
It's very loud.
Yeah, where I used to live, I had neighbors that played the Alan.
It reverberates throughout the village, yeah.
You can hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Three four houses down.
How you address it.
In the summertime, it's worse.
Because it's light longer.
Yeah.
Then they don't need lights.
Yeah. But I think that's, yeah, I, I think we're all in agreement, that's a noise ordinance as opposed to making it specific to basketball or anything, or sports court.
Just eliminate it.
Tennis or anything else.
You gonna play tennis at night?
I think if it was a restriction, we put on sports courts, it would be for all of those sports courts, which are meant to be, um, yeah.
Yeah.
So then we would say no lights for sports courts?
They all have an impact of some sort, yeah.
I think we can do that.
I'd, I'd be in favor.
And then if somebody wants one, they'll come before you.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, if I wanna have a party or something and I want to go.
No lights.
Whatever, then I have to come and request it.
So we won't allow lights?
No lights.
In general?
No lights.
I don't know where we put that in the code, but we can figure it out.
I think the public could be very happy with that.
Lots of people aren't gonna be happy, but.
Okay, moving right along, I have a question about. I'm sorry. Yeah, it, it's going to be an issue because, well, that's something I think we need to study and think about, because, you know, if it's going to cover that, then you gotta, you might have some objection to lights, you know, okay, what, what kind of lights are we restricting? Are we only, are we going after basketball? Are we going after, or sports, period?
All sports.
Okay, if we say all sports, then think, let's think about that, and then maybe at our next meeting, we can, we can probably make a decision what it covers. Okay, you wanna limit to all sports, and there's nothing problematic with that, such that it might impact other areas that would be unfair.
And that would be either in the front yard or the rear yard?
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
But obviously excluding lights that are on your structure, permanent structure.
Yeah.
Talking about auxiliary lighting.
Well, if you have house lights, those, I mean, those are fine.
Yeah, no, what these, what these folks will do, and people will do their shrewd, they'll put, they'll stick lights on the house and they'll shine them out.
Oh, I mean.
Or the basketball.
My house light shines through my home, lights up my whole backyard.
Well, gee, that's, right. So you're gonna have to put a restriction.
I didn't put it there, it was there when I moved in.
You're gonna, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could get house lights that light up the whole yard.
Right, and, and so they're gonna say, I didn't, we're not lighting up the basketball.
We're lighting up our patio.
We're just lighting up our patio, yeah. Well, that's exactly right. It was just gonna come out. I have a neighbor, he's a, a above-ground pool, he's got the light on his house, which shines, it's not a cutoff light.
Yeah.
You know? But maybe that's a lighting problem that we need.
Part of the problem with some of these is enforcing, enforcement of it, it's very difficult to, unless, unless you constantly complain to the village.
That's what I do, I mean, I call, I'm calling.
Oh, yeah.
Well, as far as our purpose here, we're saying no lights, and then the lighting issue for all of the others, we could defer to another meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Just to move along.
Are we comfortable with the no lights for sports courts being part of this?
Yes.
Yeah.
I am.
I say no, but I think I'm outnumbered.
Member Castanega?
Yeah, I, I am generally not opposed to it, actually.
Opposed to lights or no lights?
Opposed to lights, in general.
Lights with a time limit, I can live with.
No, no, no lighting after nine P.M. In the summer, they wouldn't even be needed, but.
I, I think you're gonna get into a question of arbitrariness if you say.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how do we pick that time?
I don't think we'll solve it tonight, we have two members missing, so I think maybe we should defer it for.
Revisit the light question next, at the next meeting?
Exactly.
Okay.
Moving right along, there might be an easy solution.
All right, so we're gonna continue twenty-three thirteen to our next.
Was there more to that?
No, I got, I got a few more questions.
Yes.
No, no, I'm saying we're gonna continue the twenty-three thirteen to our next meeting.
Well, let's discuss all of the questions.
Right, right.
Yeah, label them.
She's got, she's got. Okay. Um, in the table, it indicates, there was a discussion, and as part of the ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, remove requirement for ten feet, replace tenant courts and sports courts, and add a requirement for location ten feet from all lot lines. Am I correct that that's what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay. In the table, basketball equipment at least five feet from interior side lot line.
That's for sports courts. Sports courts is all lot lines, ten feet. I think basketball, we were, we're okay with five feet from the side lot line.
Well, that's what I'm trying to clarify. B says, replace tennis courts with sports courts and add a requirement for location ten feet from all lot lines.
Yes.
That's for courts.
Yes.
And, uh, and equipment. No, it's not equipment. No, no, no. I'm leaving it in my question about equipment, I'm trying to clarify. Uh, where is equipment? The lot line for equipment? That's what I'm trying to find.
It's five feet, that's not gonna change. That's not proposed to change. It doesn't, i- if, if we're in agreement that five feet is okay, which I think we were at the last meeting, then that won't change.
Will not change.
Currently, it says basketball equipment at least five feet from interior side lot line. That's what the current code says.
We agree not to change.
I think we agreed not to change that.
Right. Member Johnson stated, the commission is in agreement to keep a five-foot setback
Right, member Johnson stated the commission is in agreement to keep a five foot setback from the side property lines.
Yes.
Okay. The side property line.
Yes, and that's for the equipment.
To clarify, I think maybe the point is, there's a distinction between basketball equipment in the front yard using the driveway.
Yes.
That's where we want it five feet from the interior lot line. If you're building a basketball court in your backyard.
Should be ten.
That's a sports court, and that's ten feet from any lot line.
Yes.
But it doesn't make that distinction in the table, I think, is Mr. Member O'Brien's point.
It does.
To do a say, basketball equipment at least five feet.
But.
And then sports courts, it says ten.
Specifically states interior lot line.
These are safe basketball equipment in your front drive.
Yeah.
Needs to be five feet from the interior lot line.
I see what you're saying.
I think it's, it's implied from our.
Because if you're building it in your backyard, now we're calling it sports court.
Right, 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 okay, so we will clarify basketball equipment is referring to a basketball equipment in your front yard, as opposed to when it's in the backyard, now you put us a court.
Well, let's be careful about that.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily a court.
All right, because you can put basketball equipment in your backyard.
Without it being a court.
Without it being a court, that's what, right, so that's.
What if you have a driveway that runs all the way back into your yard?
Exactly.
It's not necessarily a court.
So let's leave it like it is.
In the table, it says basketball equipment at least five feet from the interior side lot line.
Right.
It doesn't say side lot lines, it specifically states interior.
Yes.
Side lot lines. So side lot lines should be added.
If you're a corner house.
The exterior.
Yeah, and do you want it further back from the exterior side?
I'm sorry?
We didn't put a setback for exterior side, because we eliminated the front yard side, and I think we were treating those the same. So if we want to consider putting that ten feet back into the front yard, then we might want to put something in the exterior side yard as well. Does that make sense?
But I don't want it ten feet, yeah?
No. I think we just didn't have any from the exterior or front that was taken out, but if we want to consider setbacks for those too, we could put that in.
What's your recommendation?
I mean, the, the, the thing about, you have the same issues with this exterior side that you would have with the front. The only difference is that the houses are generally closer to the lot line, so you don't have very much space. If you put it at ten feet, there's not a lot of space there sometimes, so I don't know.
I would believe it, I mean, that's not personal.
But side lot lines are not mentioned at all.
No.
Anywhere.
No, they're not, there isn't any requirement right now.
And there should be a treatment for that, because as we just discussed, there can be in the backyard, oops, mobile garage.
Yes.
Somewhere.
Do you want that, do you think five or ten feet, I'm asking, I guess, everyone?
Five feet? It's gotta stay five feet.
Five feet, okay, well, then we would just say from, take out the word interior, side lot lines, so. If everyone agrees.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay. Um, I have a personal issue with page twenty-five. Minor revisions to the text were adopted in the comprehensive text amendment adopted one-one-twenty-three. That is true.
Yeah.
The revisions from the old code to the new code that never came before this commission. These minor revisions were not thoroughly discussed, they were not discussed at all by the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, we can take.
That thorough discussion on the topic has now occurred, no, it hasn't, we finished it tonight, hopefully, and results in this proposed amendment.
Okay. Um, so we could say these minor revisions were not discussed by the planning and zoning commission?
Well, that's what you already said, these minor revisions were not thoroughly discussed.
Thoroughly, we can take the word thoroughly out, and then say that.
But we did discuss basketball.
We did discuss, no.
We discussed basketball.
There's nothing wrong with that.
We had a full discussion today. No, but you had one before, these minor revisions were not thoroughly discussed by the planning and zoning commission, that's correct. They weren't discussed.
They were not discussed. The changes never came to the commission, the changes were instituted, put into the code, and we approved it on December the eighth.
The minor revisions to the text.
Those, those.
Only indirect for basketball.
Right.
Those, I think what we're saying is they were not discussed prior to that adoption of the entire text, they weren't specifically discussed prior to the adoption on one-one.
A few words were changed.
Yes.
In a hundred and fifty-four pages, and they were not announced, and I pointed out with regards to the previous case.
Yes.
That was withdrawn, and it was essentially cabled, if you want to go back and read the text.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay, well.
So we can take the word thoroughly out, and then we could just say instead of that thorough, we, could we say, discussion on the topic has now occurred, and has resulted in this proposed amendment? Are you okay with that? I'll take thoroughly out of both.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. That can be changed.
So you have the word thoroughly.
Thorough discussion.
Take a vote out.
Because now.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll take, I'll take a vote out.
Well, take one of them. The second one is wrong.
I mean, could it really ever be thorough enough?
But I don't think anybody meant to, so we hadn't, that we were trying to sneak something past, but it was, yeah.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Mr. Bransky? Anybody on that side of the fence?
You're making it sound fair.
We didn't swear.
At least we didn't swear again.
Angela wasn't sworn in. Is it a four-foot fence or a bike?
Let's not talk about fences tonight.
So it'd be three basketball equipment at least five feet from side lot line. And where did you land on the front lot line?
Ten feet from.
Ten feet.
You wrote ten feet from the lot line with a maximum of one in the front yard.
One, only one permitted in the front yard.
Okay.
And then we, we're going, we're going to further discuss, um, the lights for sports courts.
Right.
And no music unless you clear the playlist with your neighbors. The, the noise, the noise issue should be pretty straightforward, because you, there's only one noise.
Right.
That's right, you can't have two different, you know.
Okay, so we're ready for the next one?
Do you want to make a motion?
So we can discuss lighting with everybody?
Well, we were going to hold off on the other one, or on this one until our other board members are all here.
Just want to make a motion for that.
So we'll make a motion to postpone this.
Let's continue it into the next meeting.
Continue it.
No, I'd like to vote on what we've agreed to, because it's, I mean, that.
So we were going to agree for the other two members.
But why can't we vote on what we've agreed to, just on these issues, and then the other two members for the other issues?
And then we'll talk about lighting in another.
Right, right, because I don't want to have to go back through that whole discussion again.
Yeah, I think that's.
We could do that.
So it becomes two amendments?
Yeah, let's vote on that, and then the lighting can be a separate one.
Can be, right, the lighting and noise can be a different issue.
Yeah.
Did you have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Make my purpose and come. Do you have to go through the whole?
So we don't have to do that entire discussion?
Do you have to go through the whole, when you should have, getting a new amendment for the whole, putting that out?
What?
To adjust lighting.
To adjust lighting. Member Bransky, you want to make a motion for that?
But I think that we can, yeah.
I mean, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to make that motion, Mr. Bransky, for twenty-three thirteen about the text amendment to the basketball equipment and sports courts?
Yeah, let me get to that.
Recommend that change in the recommended approval, the way it's worded. In other words, for a text amendment to revise regulations for basketball equipment and sports courts, except associated lighting, or something of that nature.
Well, but wasn't your point that lighting wasn't addressed in it in the first place?
I don't think we need to.
Something you need to point it out.
Yeah, we, we just don't need to discuss.
We're gonna, we're gonna go for an extra play, extra points.
I would say.
By bringing up the lighting amendment for sports.
I would.
Okay, I agree.
I would propose that we look at lighting in general, and not just sports courts as another topic.
You can't, you can't do that, because you, yeah.
Right.
That's what you're going, we're gonna invest in.
Yeah, look at lighting, more deep.
So, Member O'Brien, did you just make that motion, or you read it?
You're good.
Okay, let's check it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend approval of case twenty-three dash thirteen for text amendment to revise regulations for basketball equipment and sports courts. Incorporate the findings of fact into the record, and corrections as noted in the discussion.
Okay, we have a motion by Member Bransky, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Little call, please.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Uh, Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Chairman Thursday?
Yes. So now we want to do twenty-three twelve?
Angela almost tripped.
Oh, okay.
So now we'll do case twenty-three twelve, met amendment to rezone limited properties from R one to R two.
Swear to tell a home truth.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely this particular case, because, for a variety of reasons. Number one, one of our members whose home this includes, uh, is, uh, is included, uh, is not here, and I think, uh, that member should be here for what material background, uh, they could provide. In addition to that, uh, there are sixteen lots, sixteen pieces of property, and, uh, we are busy people, we don't do this full-time. We're either employed or busy during the day, that leaves in the evening or on the weekends. And to take a look at these lots, and to do that effectively, uh, there isn't enough time from the time we receive the materials, and that's not a criticism to staff, it's just a fact of life, that the detail that is involved here is too much for us to be considered to effectively review in its entirety before the meeting. So, uh, I don't know how a- a- anybody else feels, but that is my comment. Well, we could just to, uh, continue it till our next meeting. I'm tabling it indefinitely, if we, if you table something to the next meeting, or next month, next week, next, it dies at the end of a quarter. That's the rule. So indefinitely, in case something comes up in the meantime, that delays our discussion and coming back to this. I, I, I don't, this is an important issue, we have to address it, we have to discuss it fully, but we have to have time to do that, and I don't think we'll have time by the next meeting, for the meeting after that.
This is a proposal, I would love an application for a resident, so we do need to have some clarification on it.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Yeah.
Just because it does impact someone, and they did, they are a client for, uh, we impacted by this.
Yeah.
That's one thing, I would, um, one question I have, I was going to link that number, Jalen, I don't know, the other thing is, we have already, um, published for this, sent letters to everybody, and gotten all the comments. If we were to, to table this, um, indefinitely, we would have to go, go back and republish and send out the letters. Now, if we continued it to a date certain, then we don't have to go through all that.
So we're better off just continuing here.
I, I mean, it's up to you, just, but just so you understand the difference between actions.
So, staff anticipated a done deal, coming in here in a, a light discussion and approving this.
No, not at all.
Okay, I, correct me then, I, I heard that incorrectly.
No, I, that was not what I was saying, what I'm saying is, of course, you said postponed indefinitely, what I'm saying is, there's a public process that we went through for this, um, so just keep that in mind, that we have to redo that process.
Yeah.
So I think we expected some discussion on it.
And, and the applicant who this would impact, I have been in conversation with them and said, this was a route we would proceed with and see what the commission said, and based on that, we would be able to advise them on future action, so it wasn't assumed to be a done deal so much as, um, a proposal to consider, and then based on that, we can give them clear guidance, but if it's not discussed, then they're left in limbo.
It's a lot of information, I worked on it.
Yeah, I mean, we spent a long time working on it, so that's fair.
And just for, just for the record, to clarify for the record, we cannot, and I don't think you meant to state it that way, we cannot, we, we don't, we're not postponing this because we have a member who this might personally affect.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we can never do that, and I don't think that's what you meant, but, but, but let's make sure the record is clear.
No, I didn't say that.
No, that's exactly.
There's a myriad of other issues on here, in addition to that, what is important is, we do have a commissioner that is a resident of one of these homes. Well, his property would be impacted, yes.
Right, but, but that's not, but I understand.
But that's not the reason.
Right, we cannot, that is not the reason, because we're benefiting a member who listens, that, that's not our reason. That just happens to be a, be something that, that's a record, or not a record, that, that is, but it's not the reason we're postponing this.
We would like to continue with.
No, yeah.
To our next meeting, because we are short two members, and we would like to have a full discussion on it. How about that? I, let me put it this way, I think the discussion is, would be too detailed and important to have an expectation of having it done in the next meeting. Consider the fact that there may be one or two, I don't know, uh, other applications, or three applications, and we have a meeting of three or four cases. But we can always continue it again. This to me is a meeting by itself.
Yeah.
This is a meeting by itself, and I, I'm just trying to, in, in, in a way of recognizing Robert's rules of order, and I understand Chris said that it's rather arcane, and you don't follow it, but the rules of that are, as I discussed, I would rather table it indefinitely, we're not forgetting it. But, but then she just explained the difficulty of what you have to redo.
Yeah, there's, there's rules of order, and, and there's also the law, the legal public notice, public hearing requirement.
If we continue it, and we don't cover it all at the next meeting, and you have an applicant, we could continue it again.
Yeah.
Which would be simpler for you.
I mean, if, if, either way, you want to do it, I just.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with all that, the question that's raised is, and maybe I, I've read this a couple of times. I mean, this was some sort of geospatial look at, at the property. It looked, and, and it was clear that there were problems with it, and that's basically all it is, we're just trying to designate, designate appropriately whether something is R one or R two, based on the lot size. So I don't know what's complicated about that, but that's all we're doing now, certainly, for, in, and, and some of these owners may want to come more than, and be comfortable themselves with, hey, you know, you guys aren't doing anything to start to impact my property taxes or anything like that, and, and may, may have something to say, but, and, and, but, but I don't see the complexity of this, because I'm not going to go out there and measure lot sizes, okay, I'm gonna rely on what the village tells me is a lot size, I'm not taking the tape measure out there. And if that's the case, if what the state is accurate on the sizes, whether it's seven, seven fifty or fifteen hundred, uh, uh, then that's what I'm gonna rely on. So the only question then is, okay, well, if we don't get it right, I mean, are we gonna do this for, for every spot in the village? I mean, this happens to be, you know, the, the, the area it is, are we gonna find another set of properties where we do geospatial review, look, look, and find out, okay, there, we may have to, but it doesn't make it, um, problematic at shipping, it's, it's just trying to get the zoning right. That's, I mean, this is a, this is a zoning accuracy issue, right? Yes, cleaning house, this is, this is non-conform, uh, the properties that are non-conforming under one tag, and we're moving under the other tag, so they are conforming. Right, and, right, and if I'm, for my, for my prop, property description, and possibly for me being able to finance my property or do anything else with my property, I want, you know, I want to know whether I'm in R one or R two. So I, I, what I'm, I, I guess I'm. whether I'm in R1 or R2. So I, what I'm, I guess I'm asking, I've heard Member O'Brien and you say that, well, this is a big issue. Maybe it is. Maybe I'm missing something. But I, I don't see it. I mean, I read this stuff twice, and I'm saying, okay, I understand, you know, why it was done. The question is whether or not it was done correctly, and I have no reason to do that. Maybe if we have to bring somebody in, or if you provide us with the maps that we're relied upon, and it's like part of that affair, then I don't, I don't understand why this is gonna take an entire meeting just to deal with this one issue. Am I missing something?
I'm agreeing with Member Johnson. I saw, I see it the exact same way.
We're making, I'm sorry, we're making it better. I mean, this is an attempt to, right. This is the kind of cleanup we want.
So are you in agreement to continue it?
No, I, my question is, I have no problems with, you know, continuing, but I'm just wondering, you know, I was just alarmed about, you know, what was complex about this. And I just, I don't see it, so.
Not complex in that particular way that you stated. I wouldn't go out there with a tape measure and measure anything. That's not my perspective on this. My perspective on this is, we just went through four months ago, a completion of the entire, an update of the entire code. We're coming back now, four months later, and we're doing this. Why? Why wasn't it done? This alternative was not discussed during the 2022 comprehensive update, and it's now proposed for consideration. Why wasn't it done then? The analysis that was referred to here was a complete bust. It was done with regards to developing additional properties in the village on large lots that required stub roads that the village was not going to build nor maintain. And then they looked into the fact that the placement of the residences on those lots right now would not accommodate another residence. So that particular analysis, whatever time it took, just went away. Now, there's a section on here that says, "After discussing this proposed idea, the Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission determined that the existing R1 zoning district minimum requirements should be continued without amendment, while the R2 zoning district minimum requirements were reduced slightly." That was the explanation for the code update. So why are we doing this now? This is like busy work. I understand the consistency, but when you look at the numbers, the number of parcels, half of them are in compliance. There's a variety of properties there that it's not a development, it's not a, by a developer that went in and developed 16 houses, and all of the lots are the same size. There's probably 14 different lot sizes for these in this particular case. I mean, half of them comply right now.
I guess my question, you make this point. I guess my question would be, no, I wouldn't make these changes per se. I wouldn't go looking for, for an issue, right?
That speaks to your question of following it.
But, but if I have an applicant who comes forward, and I can see us sitting here talking, this, an applicant comes forward and says, look, I need this to be rezoned R2, or it's R3 now, I need to be rezoned R2, for whatever my reasons are. And then we're sitting there saying, well, wait a minute, you can't, you know, what's going on here, Angela? You can't do this. This stuff is, it's not.
You can't get big properties, it's one of these red twosies.
Right, exactly.
So then we're telling, then we're giving, then we're giving a directive to Valerie and Angela to go back and say, okay, well, how many properties over there? And we can't make a decision, because how many properties are over there that we're gonna have to make this change? So this, this came to us. We didn't go looking for it. Right? Is that right? We didn't go looking for this, because, yeah.
It was an application, and I think, I mean, I'm not sure that my opinion is very welcome, but it was also taking into due consideration your concerns about the study that the, that the consultant did, looking at where there were inconsistencies in the map, and digging in with more data than what they had applied. And that's where this other perspective of, you know, we talked about making lots smaller, that didn't seem to be the right fit. Okay, but then what about the ones that really just aren't conforming? And what is the actual nuance behind them? So it was, it was two sides of that. But it was kind of, we only spent so long looking at the map. We actually spent so much time on the text that the map wasn't looked at as detailed. And so it is more work stemming from that, because there was only so much we could do in that, that time period, which I think we talked about.
But we also agree that it was okay to adjust this stuff at a later time in order to get the changes passed in January. So here we are.
So it wasn't something that you had to do. So no good deed goes unmarked, right?
Yeah, we could have just brought a variance forward, and then we would have been like, oh, okay, but why doesn't this match any of the conformity?
If I was gonna do anything with this, I would, you've got an address, a lot width, a lot area there, but if I look in this map here, I've got PIN numbers.
Okay, I could, I could give that more clarity.
If we could put a, an address where that PIN number is, that would certainly clarify it.
I can do that.
Because, I mean, how do we know which?
You're right.
Right. You know, which one is 2145 Chestnut?
So you're just gonna make another column in that.
I'll, I'll update the map. Yeah, yeah, you weren't in my head with me on that one.
I just put the number, you know, the ID number right in that lot.
You got it.
But this is the example, you know, I commend the staff for doing this, because it wasn't something that hadn't been done, based on what you're doing. So it's, so I, yeah, I mean, I assume we're gonna get another map amendment at some point in the future, for some other part of the village, that will have to make another amendment. Because I'm not gonna take a, you know, we're not gonna hire somebody to do, what, how do they do the geospatial airplane? Or, not airplane key, but what the?
Oh, radar, LiDAR, something. I think right now, the, all of the data is maintained through recorded documents. And I'm kind of filling in the blanks on things I don't know the most about. But I think that when we report documents, they go to Cook County, Cook County updates the GIS, and then South Suburban Mayor's Managers, who also manages our GIS. So it's all based on, you know, single surveys of single lots coming out and making those updates. It's not like holistic, original planning.
If that's the case, then we should be doing that. Anytime we get those, we should be coming in here. And we want it right, right? So we should, we should come in and do this.
Well, no, I take that back. Only if there's an applicant. Only if there's an applicant.
Yeah. We've got enough things to keep us busy.
So my, my point is, we didn't bring this on ourselves, but, but you took the time to go in and study it and do this, and then put it before.
Yeah, in this case, there was an applicant who took the application, did a thorough analysis of the area, and said, well, we can't rezone one property. What makes sense if we want to use that?
An applicant came in?
Yeah.
And what was the problem with that particular request?
The lot coverage exceeded that allowed for R1, the R1 district. But if you look at the characteristics of the lot, it exactly matches the characteristics of an R2 lot, as do those neighboring ones. And so rather than applying for a variance, that might not have been the right route, looking at them comprehensively, and using the previous conversations we had during the ordinance update, brought us to the idea of proposing the rezoning.
Because of compliance.
Yeah. And as built, it was already over. Yeah.
Why wasn't that presented in our materials? That that's material to the, to the thinking about this?
Okay.
But, well, that, I mean, the.
We can, I can make those additions and revisions.
Well, it's not a revision. It's the fact that you're just stating that there was.
Background.
A background, that's all it's about. So my, yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, my, you know, my thought about this is that we should be able to cover it in the next meeting.
Yes, so we'll continue it, instead of canceling it.
No, I wasn't canceling it. I was tabling it indefinitely.
But if we, I can't explain it. All the different processes you have to go through if you're gonna table it. We'll continue it. That way, everything else has already been done. We'll just mention it's, this case is gonna be heard on such and such date, instead of, it's been continued to such and such date. Then that's all you have to do, right, Angela?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the only thing that we're asking the staff to do is to provide, I guess, some background summary of.
And put numbers on your list.
And I'll, and I'll update numbers on that for you. If you need a colored copy, I can get to that as well. That's helpful.
Yeah, because there was another sheet that had the address. Yeah, this one.
Yes.
It's got the address, it's got the PIN, and it shows on the map, the first, the address numbers.
The address numbers, right.
So at least you can identify on this map which house it is.
Can you fit those pins in, on the map?
I think, I think the addresses will be more helpful than the pins. And that's where I started giving them.
You've got the PIN numbers there already.
Yeah, it's the difference of whether I use the zoning map or the Cook County underlay.
So if we're talking about continuing it, how much time do you have?
That's my point. I mean, that's my, my opinion. This is not rocket science, based on what we have. It's to the next meeting. Assume, yeah. Now, Member O'Brien said that if we are, that we probably would have just that one issue, if that, if that's the case. So we're gonna be holding up people, but I, you know. I mean, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna, I'll ask some questions.
I'll hold a flashlight, you hold a tape measure.
No, no.
Okay?
No, I'm, I'm just gonna go, I'm gonna go talk to somebody and say, okay, am I missing something? Yeah. But, so, yeah, so I think.
Do you want to discuss it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
All right. So we would like to make a motion to continue case 2312, map amendment to rezone limited properties from R1 to R2 until our next available meeting.
Limited map amendment.
Somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
That's what I thought. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion by Member Johnson, and a second by a member Bransky. Roll call.
Uh, Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Johnson, yeah.
Yes.
Travis Ziga?
Yes. And that's all we have. Didn't we already do the spa in Kedzie?
I'm sorry?
Didn't we already do the spa in Kedzie?
It's a, is it an expansion of it, or?
No, this is a different one. And the facts will look a little different than when you looked at other spas in that building because of the changes, the zoning requirements. She wasn't prepared yet for today. But it's not, it's not one you've seen before. There are a number of salons disappearing in that, that building because of the people zoning.
It's a building right down the other side of itself.
Okay, that building, yeah.
Is that office building on that one, salon thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, 183rd and Kedzie is on the corner. Right across from Jewel.
It's right across from the, yeah.
Jewel.
Yeah, the lot over south.
Well, it's that on the corner. Take that back.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of sneakily.
Yeah, that, that lot has no parking there, right?
Yeah, it's, limited parking, yes.
I think they've got 51 spaces in the lot, and the requirements under the old ordinance was like 76.
Right, yeah, it's crazy.
And we had conversations forever about they wouldn't go across and park a jewel, because they'd have to go across Kedzie.
That was about three years ago.
And there's a fitness center in there that takes up most of the parking.
Exactly.
And the, and the owner was here and indicated that he has two offices for himself in that building.
Yes. Has anyone here ever been in that building? I walked actually one in a couple times for one of these cases.
We need to request that the owner be present.
Yeah, that's actually the question. Do you need one of the owner to be?
We've asked that before.
I think we should.
I think in this case, the owner should be present.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah. That was something we talked about doing.
Yeah, didn't Chris say that we couldn't do that? Didn't Chris say we couldn't do that?
No, he said there are times that you may need to.
Okay, mandate it.
Yeah.
The, we, we do have a second case for next week, or two weeks from now as well. And that one, the owner will be, the property owner will be present.
And what kind of salon is that?
Hair. It actually is.
But for these kinds of.
And where in downtown do they want to put it?
A messy building.
But it's a building where we should be getting.
Talked about the property ownership before, so I have second.
These are the kinds of cars.
This is normal?
It's easy.
Did you get this in Orlando, where it was all salons?
Um, I don't think they were specially used in this, and I didn't do the zoning permits, so I don't know.
All right, if nothing else, I will.
I have one question. At the economic breakfast this morning, somebody mentioned Indianapolis, and because of this issue, and regarding first floors. And apparently, they have in their ordinance, as I was, as we were told at the table, an ordinance that you cannot be on the first floor unless you generate retail sales tax. That's, that's a requirement. So I'm wondering if you could look that up, contact Indianapolis.
And where was that?
Because that's what was stated at the table.
But that's what we've been talking.
Well, because the desire to get, because these salons do not, unless they, well, most of them do not generate sales tax.
If they sell product, but generally, so.
Yeah, it's, it's not a lot either.
In the B1 district, right?
That would be in the B1.
Yeah, right. But you're saying in Indianapolis as a whole, or in the B1 district?
No, as a whole, first floor. That's the impression that we got at the table.
What was that? Oh, yeah, what another?
No, but the person discussing it did not specifically state or, or indicate only a section of the city.
Boy, that'd be a tough one to fill, in today's day and age.
Well, we, we had too many that we let, let under the.
Well, many of these salons do not sell products. They just sell services. And the discussion at the table was, well, some people thought that services should be taxed as well. I said, we're not a home rule community.
I don't think that's even enabled in Illinois at all.
Maybe we should have been thinking about that when we first started.
Well, we, we could have a head tax for a salon that doesn't sell any product. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, tonight, that's a new business. We are starting our downtown master plan. We've got two members of the commission who will be a part of our SCAR team, and we're kicking off that next week. and we're kicking off that next week. So thank you to Member Bransky and Member O'Brien who will be participating in that and they will be the liaisons to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Who's it going to be?
The process, Member O'Brien and Member Bransky.
Oh, okay.
For the, yeah, so I just wanted to give a quick update on that. We'll also have a number of focus groups and then community-wide engagement opportunities. So as much as you all want to spend more time talking planning and visioning for the future, you're always right.
And we want you guys to this morning stand at the podium and report back to us.
Exactly.
And don't you agree?
Yes.
I think so, I think so. We have to give them a time limit though.
It will fall trippingly off of the tongue.
All right, so we need a motion to adjourn. Anybody else have anything else they would like to bring up?
We're going to let Elizabeth do that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Oh no, I can't do that.
Motion to adjourn.
That was my early, that was the morning meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Third.
Aye.
Member Castadega and who seconded? O'Brien, okay. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
And thanks for the pictures, Angela.
Oh, yeah, are those, are those work or?